Good morning. Today is Monday, May 9, 2022. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Audrey Lopez. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce this morning's pledged students?
Yes, thank you, Caesar. So this morning, we have with us Ms. Martinez's 4th grade class from Herrera Elementary School. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez, you may go ahead and unmute now.
Okay.
Okay, we are ready for you. Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the honor of Texas law, I pledge allegiance to me, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Great job. Well, this brings a lot of joy to our hearts, just having the children do the pledge of allegiance. So, Ms. Martinez, thank you so much for joining us. Commissioner Olgin, thank you very much for coordinating this great event as we start off Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Next, we'll receive an invocation from Rabbi Levi Greenberg.
Before I give the invocation, I would like to begin with an act of kindness.
Thank you.
Sovereign of the world, look favorably upon our elected officials who serve our county with such dedication and bestow upon them the joy of life, good health, and prosperity. Bless these people who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our county with wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. 3,334 years ago, the Israelites were redeemed from centuries of cruel slavery at the hands of an evil nation, the paragon of moral and ethical depravity at the time. The newly freed slaves were told that in 50 days' time, they would stand at the foot of Mount Sinai and experience divine revelation. They would receive the Ten Commandments, which would serve as the basis and anchor for moral and ethical societies for generations to come. In great anticipation for this awesome event, the Israelites counted the days with great excitement, preparing and refining themselves to be worthy of receiving such special instruction. Jewish tradition emulates this countdown every year, known in Hebrew as Svirata Omer. From the holiday of Passover, which commemorates the liberation from Egypt, we count 49 days to the festival of Shavuot, which commemorates the revelation of Sinai and the communication of the Ten Commandments. Today, we counted 23 days. The idea of this annual countdown is to express how every day must count. Every day, every hour, and every minute must be utilized for positivity, to think well about another person, share a good word, and especially to do another act of kindness. As the famous Hasidic adage goes, "One must strive that today should be far better than yesterday, and that tomorrow should look much better than today." Please, God, give strength to our elected officials to be cognizant of your presence and conduct their deliberations accordingly, that they have the ability to elevate the quality of life for everyone in our region and to be an inspiration to us all to make our days count, that we truly care for our peers, for society, our environment, and work together to make our world a better place for all. May our borderland regions serve as a beacon of light, strength, and moral courage as we do our part in preparing the world for an era of global peace and tranquility. May this occur speedily in our days, and let us say amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Greenfield. We're so happy that you're here. You're always such a friend of the court, and we continue to support your encouragement of kindness and sharing and generosity. And we'll be working, as you know, our employees received the ark, and we'll work really hard on that because I think it's an expression that, as you said, when you get up and you're generous and kind, then your whole day will be as such. And we encourage children at an early age to learn how to be generous and courteous. So, thank you for your partnership with us and the Jewish community. We thank you for being here today. Thank you.
And thank you, Judge, and all the commissioners for signing the resolution earlier on for April 12, which was the rabbi's birthday, and encouraging increased acts of kindness. Many blessings.
Thank you. Likewise.
Judge, with your permission, can we move to public comment briefly?
Absolutely. We will be splitting up public comments today. We'll have the first part right now and then later on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We do have the sheriff's officers on our guard.
Good morning. Robert Rojas, Commander with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Criminal Investigations Division. Taking this time to officially and cordially invite you all to our fifth annual county memorial, where we honor the law enforcement officers that have passed away throughout El Paso County in the line of duty. And this is just an invitation to next week's May 17 at 10 o'clock, our memorial.
Thank you very much. Thank you. As you know, our sheriffs are such a big part of our family, and we honor everything that you do. And those that have fallen have been difficult for us, especially Deputy Pete Herrera and others, not only in the sheriffs but in law enforcement in general. As always, I would love Commissioner Leon to say a few words.
Judge, thank you very much, and I'm really looking forward to next week. And, you know, when people buy a new car, you make payments. And sadly, for the safety and the recognition that El Paso receives for the way we live, it's not free. There's payments that have been made, and I'm sorry to say that possibly in the future too. So, I'm very thankful for our law enforcement here in our county, and I'm really looking forward to being with you and spending some time and thanking those who have made those sacrifices for us to be here this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. We thank the sheriff for everything that he does, and Pete Ferroni and others that support the organization. We'll do everything that we can. Please let us know how we could help to make it even more successful. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Have a great week.
Thank you. Bye, Christina. Likewise.
Judge, do you have some opening comments for us this morning?
Yeah, just on behalf of myself and the commissioners, we welcome you to Commissioners' Court, and as always, we thank you for being part of our county government and that you learned what's happening and have always said that it holds our feet to the fire. The more people know and the promises that we make and the commitments we make, we really want to make sure that we go through with them. And as always, thank you for being here today. We have a lot of special people here. As you know, the resolutions are something that are sort of dear to us at Commissioners' Court, the opportunity to recognize individuals and organizations. So, welcome today, and thank you for being here. I know we have a good listening audience virtually as well, and we thank you for being part of it. Thank you.
Item number four is the consent agenda, composed of items 4A through 4S. We do have a request from the Planning and Development Department to delete item number 4N from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that members of the court or the public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Stout?
Item E. Item 4E for Commissioner Stout.
Move to approve the rest.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 5A from Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Saturday, May 14, 2022, a Stamp Out Hunger Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Caesar. Judge, Commissioners, we have a few special guests with us, and Celeste Varela, who has been with the county for many, many years, is visiting us with the food bank. But if you don't mind, Celeste, if you can step forward to the podium, and Mr. Villa with the Letter Carriers Association. And I thought that Richard Deup was also going to be here, I guess...
He's stuck in a meeting, so he's not going to make it to join us this morning.
So, Celeste, as you know, I'll read the resolution, and thank you for allowing my office to read it, and I'm very proud to do it for you and the letter carriers. Whereas for 27 years, the National Association of Letter Carriers, combined with the United States Postal Service, have used the Saturday before Mother's Day for the largest one-day food drive to eliminate hunger in our community. And whereas the generosity of the community made it possible for the letter carriers while delivering mail to collect over 100,000 pounds of nonperishable food per year, which supplements food for thousands of families in need. And whereas El Paso's Fighting Hunger Food Bank, the AFL-CIO Teamsters, and the United Way of El Paso have joined the National Association of Letter Carriers in this great effort. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby declare Sunday, excuse me, Saturday, May 14, 2022, a Stamp Out Hunger Day, and encourages the community to make this food drive the best and largest single-food day drive in the history of El Paso County. Sign this ninth day of May 2022 by the honorable members of Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 5A from Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Saturday, May 14, 2022, a Stamp Out Hunger Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Caesar. Judge, Commissioners, we have a few special guests with us, and Celeste Varela, who has been with the county for many, many years, is visiting us with the food bank. But if you don't mind, Celeste, if you can step forward to the podium, and Mr. Villa with the Letter Carriers Association. And I thought that Richard Deup was also going to be here, I guess...
He's stuck in a meeting, so he's not going to make it to join us this morning.
So, Celeste, as you know, I'll read the resolution, and thank you for allowing my office to read it, and I'm very proud to do it for you and the letter carriers. Whereas for 27 years, the National Association of Letter Carriers, combined with the United States Postal Service, have used the Saturday before Mother's Day for the largest one-day food drive to eliminate hunger in our community. And whereas the generosity of the community made it possible for the letter carriers while delivering mail to collect over 100,000 pounds of nonperishable food per year, which supplements food for thousands of families in need. And whereas El Paso's Fighting Hunger Food Bank, the AFL-CIO Teamsters, and the United Way of El Paso have joined the National Association of Letter Carriers in this great effort. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby declare Sunday, excuse me, Saturday, May 14, 2022, a Stamp Out Hunger Day, and encourages the community to make this food drive the best and largest single-food day drive in the history of El Paso County. Sign this ninth day of May 2022 by the honorable members of Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Celeste, I've got to say that, as you know, the court is very supportive of what you do, and I'm just astonished for every dollar that's donated to the food bank, what you all do with that in feeding so many people. And I've said this before, some years back, I remember driving up to someplace and buying some food for my grandson at a fast-food place and thinking to myself that...
refining themselves to be worthy of receiving such special instruction. Jewish tradition emulates this countdown every year known in Hebrew as Svirata Omer. From the holiday of Passover, which commemorates the liberation from Egypt, we count forty-nine days to the festival of Shavuot, which commemorates the revelation of Sinai and the communication of the Ten Commandments. Today, we counted twenty-three days. The idea of this annual countdown is to express how every day must count. Every day, every hour, and every minute must be utilized for positivity, to think well about another person, share a good word, and especially to do another act of kindness. As the famous Hasidic adage goes, "One must strive that today should be far better than yesterday, and that tomorrow should look much better than today." Please, God, give strength to our elected officials to be cognizant of your presence and conduct their deliberations accordingly, that they have the ability to elevate the quality of life for everyone in our region, and to be an inspiration to us all to make our days count, that we truly care for our peers, for society, our environment, and work together to make our world a better place for all. May our borderland region serve as a beacon of light, strength, and moral courage as we do our part in preparing the world for an era of global peace and tranquility. May this occur speedily in our days, and let us say amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Greenfield. We're so happy that you're here. You're always such a friend of the court, and we continue to support your encouragement of kindness and sharing and generosity. And we'll be working, as you know, our employees received the ark, and we'll work really hard on that because I think it's an expression that, as you said, when you get up and you're generous and kind, then your whole day will be as such. And we encourage children at an early age to learn how to be generous and courteous. So, thank you for your partnership with us and the community, with the Jewish community. We thank you for being here today. Thank you.
And thank you, Judge, and all the commissioners for signing the resolution earlier on for April 12th, which was the Rabb's birthday, and encouraging increased acts of kindness. Many blessings.
Thank you. Likewise.
Judge, with your permission, can we move to public comment briefly?
Absolutely. We will be splitting up public comments today. We'll have the first part right now and then later on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We do have the sheriff's officers honor guard.
Robert Rojas, Commander with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Criminal Investigations Division. Taking this time to officially and cordially invite you all to our fifth annual county memorial, where we honor the law enforcement officers that have passed away throughout El Paso County in the line of duty. And this is just an invitation to next week's, May 17th, at 10 o'clock, our memorial.
Thank you very much. As you know, our sheriffs are such a big part of our family, and we honor everything that you do. And those that have fallen have been difficult for us, you know, especially Deputy Pete Herrera and others that not only in the sheriffs but in law enforcement in general. As always, I would love Commissioner Leon to say a few words.
Judge, thank you very much, and I'm really looking forward to next week. And, you know, when you, when people buy a new car, you make payments. And sadly, for the safety and the recognition that El Paso receives for the way we live, it's not free. There's payments that have been made, and I'm sorry to say that possibly in the future too. So, I'm very thankful for our law enforcement here in our county, and I'm really looking forward to being with you and spending some time and thanking those who have made those sacrifices for us to be here this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. We thank the sheriff for everything that he does, and Pete Ferroni and others that support the organization. We'll do everything that we can. Please let us know how we could help to make it even more successful. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Have a great week.
Thank you. Bye, Christina.
Judge, do you have some opening comments for us this morning?
Yeah, just on behalf of myself and the commissioners, we welcome you to Commissioners' Court, and as always, we thank you for being part of our county government and that you learned what's happening and have always said that it holds our feet to the fire. The more people know and the promises that we make and the commitments we make, we really want to make sure that we go through with them. And as always, thank you for being here today. We have a lot of special people here. As you know, the resolutions are something that are sort of dear to us at Commissioners' Court, the opportunity to recognize individuals and organizations. So, welcome today, and thank you for being here. I know we have a good listening audience virtually as well, and we thank you for being part of it. Thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4S. We do have a request from the Planning and Development Department to delete item number 4N from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that members of the Court of the Public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Stout?
Item E. Item 4E for Commissioner Stout.
Move to approve the rest.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve and Adopt a Resolution Recognizing Saturday, May 14th, 2022, a Stamp Out Hunger Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Caesar. Judge, Commissioners, we have a few special guests with us, and Celeste Varela, who has been with the county for many, many years, is visiting us with the Food Bank. But if you don't mind, Celeste, if you can step forward to the podium, and Mr. Villa with the Letter Carriers Association. And I thought that Richard Deup was also going to be here, I guess.
He's stuck in a meeting, so he's not going to make it to join us this morning.
So, Celeste, as you know, I'll read the resolution, and thank you for allowing my office to read it, and I'm very proud to do it for you and the letter carriers. Whereas for twenty-seven years, the National Association of Letter Carriers, combined with the United States Postal Service, have used the Saturday before Mother's Day for the largest one-day food drive to eliminate hunger in our community. And whereas the generosity of the community made it possible for the letter carriers while delivering mail to collect over 100,000 pounds of non-perishable food per year, which supplements food for thousands of families in need. And whereas El Paso's Fighting Hunger Food Bank, the AFL-CIO Teamsters, and the United Way of El Paso have joined the National Association of Letter Carriers in this great effort. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby declare Sunday, excuse me, Saturday, May 14th, 2022, a Stamp Out Hunger Day, and encourages the community to make this food drive the best and largest single-food day drive in the history of El Paso County. Sign this ninth day of May 2022 by the honorable members of Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Celeste, I've got to say that, as you know, the Court is very supportive of what you do, and I'm just astonished for every dollar that's donated to the Food Bank, what you all do with that in feeding so many people. And I've said this before, some years back, I remember driving up to someplace and buying some food for my grandson at a fast-food place, and thinking to myself that I have the ability to buy food, but there are so many families that don't have that luxury, and they go hungry every night, children go hungry every night. So, I appreciate you being here, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, good morning. It's good to see you all in person, be here with you this morning. For the record, Celeste Varela with El Paso's Fighting Hunger Food Bank. Thank you, Commissioner Leon, for sponsoring this resolution. Stamp Out Hunger has been in a pandemic-induced hiatus for the last two years, but we're really pleased to partner with the National Association of Letter Carriers once again and get this community initiative restarted. This is a really neighbor-to-neighbor help, and we're really happy to restart it. We're happy that our partners came back together. It was very quick this year, but I think the national-level office of the letter carriers realized that this is really important to bring communities together again. So, thank you. Again, I'm going to introduce Gerino Villa, and he is with the National Association of Letter Carriers.
Thank you, Celeste.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Gerino Villa. I'm a retired letter carrier. I'm with the National Association of Letter Carriers, Branch 505, El Paso, Texas. And again, I want to thank you for the proclamation, and I'd like to pass out to you the bags that we're going to be using this weekend to collect the food. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. And Celeste, I want to thank you. We're so proud of you being a part of the county and now doing this, but I can't tell our audience how important it was, especially during the pandemic, when people were really struggling to be able to afford any kind of food and being hungry. Here in El Paso, of all places, you would think that we were at a different situation, but it was endless and relentless on your part and your organization. So, Celeste, thank you so much for representing us and letting them know what happens when you work at the county. Thank you.
We thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Celeste. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Item number 5B. Approve and Adopt a Resolution Recognizing May 6 through the 12th, 2022, as National Nurses Week, honoring the varying roles and their positive impact on our lives and in our community in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. It's quite an honor for me to present this resolution. Once again, tying it back to the pandemic, it was unbelievable what they went through. Our system could have fallen apart. Nurses were doing things beyond anybody's capacity. So, very proud of the nurses, everything that they've done, and of course, we always depend on them. There's a shortage now of nurses. They went through some difficult times, having to stay away from their loved ones throughout most of the pandemic. And so, like I said, it's quite an honor for me to read this into the record. Whereas over 2.8 million registered nurses and nearly 700,000 licensed practical nurses make up the nation's largest healthcare profession, and whereas nurses have grown to the healthcare industry's most trusted profession, and this is no different in our community. Nurses have been serving the El Paso community for over a century, and it's indicative throughout the nation. The nursing profession will continue to grow at a pace that surpasses all other occupations. This growth surely being felt in our community as four major universities and colleges, eight major hospitals, including a military installation, over 20 clinics, and numerous nurses work closely to meet the healthcare needs of our citizens. And whereas the week of May 6 through May 12 has been declared throughout the United States, including the University of Texas at El Paso, and community partners as National Nurses Week. This year's national theme is "A Voice to Lead: Invest in Nursing and Respecting the Right to Secure Global Health, Focusing on the Need to Protect, Support, and Invest in the Nursing Profession to Strengthen Health Systems Around the World." And whereas all citizens of the County of El Paso, Ford Bliss, and the surrounding areas are asked to honor, thank the nurses who give themselves tirelessly to ensure the health and well-being of our community. This includes hospital nurses, nurse practitioners, school nurses, and nursing students. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court hereby declare that the week of 6 through May 12, 2022, be known as National Nurses Week. Sign this ninth day of May 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Alejandra Valenzuela. I'm the Director for the Pediatric Nurse Practitioner Program at the University of Texas at El Paso. On behalf of the university dean, Leslie Robbins, and all the nurses who work tirelessly to keep our community healthy, we want to thank you for this resolution. May God continue to grant us the strength and the perseverance to care for one another. Thank you, Judge Samaniego.
Thank you, Dr. Valenzuela. It's, you know, it's such a pleasure. UTEP has just been so instrumental as we're, you know, we're a lot of retired, some decided to get another profession, and I know you have some huge challenges, but just the fact that you're working on that and keeping us, you know, our health in mind and protecting us from all the things that can happen. People don't realize that when the pandemic happened, still we have accidents, we still have heart attacks, we still have all of these other things, and managing both. So, thank you for supporting that career, and we thank you for, you know, doing as much as you can to make sure that we're safe as we go forward. So, thank you very much, and thanks, UTEP, for that.
You all for your support.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Leon?
Doctor, I just wanted to also thank you. My daughter's also a nurse and a graduate of UTEP.
Oh, that's wonderful.
In the nursing program, but she's over at Providence East, has been there for quite a few years. But I've got to say that they work 12-hour shifts, and they're lucky if they only work 12 hours. And I've seen over the years the sacrifices they make in order to keep their patients, number one, healthy and safe, and the fact that just the preparation and coming home to change in the garage and get into other clothing so you can go inside the house, so many things that impact a nurse's life. So, I wanted to personally thank you, thank my daughter Lori, and all nurses out there. Matter of fact, with the sheriff's help, we picked up lunch for them a year ago, and it was so nice to be able to meet all of them. So, again, thank you for what you do, what you produce.
No, thank you. It's a great vocation.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Do we have Mrs. Lopez? Would she be speaking as well?
No, she won't be here.
Oh, okay. So, I had her here on the list. Once again, thank you. If you see a nurse, grab them, hug them, let them know how much we care for them because we really need that career to continue, just to support us in our community. Thank you.
Approve and Adopt a Resolution Declaring the Month of May 2022 as National Drug Court Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Judge Nchondo, you want to come up? Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the doctor.
It's an honor and a pleasure to be able to do this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Judge and Commissioners, it's always a pleasure to stand here before you. I was just acknowledging to the doctor that this Saturday, my daughter Stephanie also will be a nurse, so she'll be engaging in that career, and I guess she'll start understanding the 12-hour shifts. So, I wish her well. Anyway.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Judge. So, let me read this into the record. Whereas treatment courts have been restoring lives and families for over three decades, there are now nearly 4,000 treatment courts nationwide. And whereas the treatment courts are the cornerstone of justice reform sweeping the nation and have served over 1.5 million individuals, and whereas they are now recognized as the most successful justice system intervention in our nation's history and save an average of 6,000 for every individual they serve. Whereas treatment courts significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime, and do so at less expense than any other criminal justice strategy. Whereas treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements, and increase the rate of addicted mothers delivering babies who are fully drug-free. And whereas the treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health. And whereas treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of the substance use and crime, we all rise. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court hereby declare the month of May 2022 be known as National Drug Court Month. Sign this ninth day of May 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge Nchondo?
Judge, thank you so much. Commissioners, thank you so much. Out of those three decades, at least, we're very proud to be at least two decades part of that service that we have given to this community over the years. You know, the face of the impaired driver in this country has severely changed since the 70s, and it was a great amount of it that was alcohol. We have now, research is now coming back and telling us that it's drug-impaired driving, and it's polysubstance. And the good thing we're doing here, of course, is trying to restore those lives, changing the behavior, making these individuals safer for our community, and we're certainly giving them the opportunity to what we have in our program with the multidisciplinary team that we have, many individuals, trying to help these individuals change their lives. You know, the impact of these folks is that over 1 million of these people are getting arrested every year, these DWI cases. About over 111 million are self-reported. So, we got a lot of work to do. But I can honestly say that National Drug Court Month is to showcase and present to you all, our stakeholders in our community, in our public, of the hard work that these courts are actually doing for these individuals and families, and changing the lives of many so that we can at least bring those numbers down. The numbers are still astronomical, and I'm not proud to say that Texas leads that. So, we're trying to make an impact of not having people re-offend, not come back into the system. And I'm proud to say that I think that nationally, people that go through these courts, at least 75% do not. We're very proud to be up in the 90s. 90% of the folks don't come back once they've graduated in the program. So, I know that the support that you've given us and the support this community has given us, the public, has really been able to restore lives. But you know, this is what this month is about, just to recognize the great work that these courts are doing, the teams that are part of this effort to make these changes. We're very proud to be a part of that, and we're very proud to have the support from you all. But I don't want to be the showcase here. You know, I've invited our team members who are here. Some of them are here. I have Associate Judge Adolores Reyes here. I guess, present from our new program that just started. It's called the Rise Program, and that's to help them recover and invest in themselves. Ms. Latifah Medina, who's the program director of the program, and Ms. Judith Rodriguez is also our specialty court liaison. But the testimony...
Judge Reyes, you can ask Judge Reyes, come on up and with your team.
I don't know why they're shy, Judge. They actually tell us what's in the court.
The team, come on up.
This team is so wonderful, and this is only part of this team.
Thank you, Judge.
That's really the hard work of these courts is the team. And so, without them, you know, we wouldn't be much of a success. We're still very proud to be an academy court, and we're one of four of those courts in the country, and we're very proud to be one of those here in El Paso. So, it gives me great, you know, just gives pride of what the work we're doing here.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Rubio.
Mr. Rubio?
They're graduates of this program, and I'll tell you what, they have a story. I met these two individuals, Judge and Commissioners. They were very lost. They were very down. But how they've turned their lives around, ugh, it's incredible to hear. But I've invited them to share a few words.
Mr. Rubio, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Adrian Gagas.
Salas?
Adrian Gagas, CNJES. You know, I'm no longer the problem, the solution, you know. I met Mr. Robert Tonda when I was probably 19 years old, you know, on the wrong side, constantly getting in trouble, you know, but he believed in me, you know, and I'm honored to say that I am sober, I am clean, I'm honest, and this program has taught me so much, you know. I have amends with my family members, my mother, my father, you know. This is something that means the world to me, my sobriety. I'm two years sober. I continue helping out. I'm from an AA program. I'm also from another program called the Renegades Recovery. I help out, but because of this program, it gave me that chance to do a second life. When I was walking through these doors, the guard told me, "Court." I said, "Not today, not today." And that felt really good because I keep working my program. I keep doing what I have to do, and I'm doing the right thing, you know, because he believed in me. He has this wonderful program that has classes, wonderful people, you know. Yes, it's tough, yes, it's intense, but at the end of the day, I get to sleep at night, and I learned what serenity was. I am at peace, calm, untroubled, and that's why I'm here, to spread the message. And whatever it takes for my recovery and to help another individual, I will go that far, because I have gone really low to get my drug habits, my alcoholics, and, you know, going to jail, you know. So, whatever it does to keep my sobriety, I will fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Keep telling the story because there's people out there that think that that's going to be their life forever and that they can't get out of it, and they need to hear someone like yourself talk about that, you know, you found yourself in a bad place, but now you're in a great place, and God bless you for that. Thank you. Mr. Rubio?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner.
Good morning.
My name's Armando Rubio. I'm in long-term recovery for three years, five months, and 13 days now. I say it this way because I'm proud of each day I've been sober. I want to say thank you to Judge and to all his team, his coordinated. He has an excellent group. The reason I'm here, standing before you, is because of him. If not, I probably would be dead now. Alcohol, I'm sorry, I'm breaking up. I'm emotional.
It's okay.
Like I said, if it wasn't for the judge, I probably would be dead by now. I was a cocaine addict, alcohol addict. He gave me a second chance at life. Sorry. It's hard for me.
Take your time.
I lost my life. It's alcoholism and drugs. I lost my children. I totally, he remembers. I haven't had any communication with my children, not thanks to this program. I'm in communication with my children because they know that I've changed. I'm judging by actions that their father's not an alcoholic, drug addict anymore. I've been able to regain, I'm in school right now, to regain my CDL back, which I lost. I lost my education. January, I'll be going back to get my bachelor's in addiction counseling because I want to keep telling my story and helping other people that have been in my situation because I've been there, been there, done that, I've been in prison, I know how I feel, and the way I can help other people now is by telling my story like Adrian, because I don't want other people to go through what I've been through. I want to say thank you again, Judge, for everything you've done for me, your team. You have an excellent team. This program, she deserves all the support it gets. The following program, Rise, is a continuation from Drug Court. Those two programs are real benefit. I just want to say thank you to everybody for listening to me. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rubio, for your courageous testimony, and we thank you for wanting to continue to help others. I can tell you, Judge Nchondo, he doesn't like a lot of the, you know, the kudos and things like that, but he went to Jefferson High School, and so I could say anything I want to about that guy.
Silver Fox.
Silver Fox, yeah. And we're thinking ahead when we said Silver Foxes. But thank you, Judge Nchondo and your team. If you ever want to understand of how things can change, and Judge Reyes, and your team, it's just unbelievable. When you hear someone say, "I got my son back," that I lost for six years because of the drug addiction and everything that happened, it just breaks your heart, but it just gives you such a sense of hope that people can recover. And as I said earlier, at that point, they don't think they can. As I said earlier, at that point, they don't think they can. I know both of you at one point thought this is, you know, it ain't going to get better. It's going to get worse, and then these things happen. So we're so proud of Judge Nchondo and his team because they've gotten national recognition and continue to get others, other cities that want to do the same. And you do that by such a great benchmark and an example that other cities want to do that, and they ask for Judge Nchondo and his team to support that. So we're very, very proud of Judge Nchondo, of you and your team. So thank you for this.
What I forgot to mention is that when these folks, I see them later, is how youthful they look, you know. They're looking like twenty-eight, twenty-three. And so they just look fantastic, you know. This is what it's all about.
Yeah.
That's right here.
Judge. At the end of the day, yeah, Commissioner Robinson?
Judge Nchondo, ladies and gentlemen, twenty years ago, we were not talking about the successes that we have today. One of the things I did more than twenty years ago is I did drug education and prevention, working with JPD, DCJ, with situations just like this. And the professionals, the ones who held the money, they didn't feel that prevention and education was important. It was more of putting heads in beds than, and I'm all supportive of law enforcement, but the thing is that we put more people in heads in beds, you know, as opposed to say, "Well, this is an individual. This is an individual, a member of our society, who has a problem and needs our help." So as opposed to, first thing we say, "Well, lock him up, lock him up." Do we solve the problem? No. In some cases, we increase the problem. But Judge Nchondo, I appreciate you and your staff, it's what you guys do. I know, I've been there, I've been in a room, it's amazing that some of the work that the staff had to endure with individuals when they first come into the program, as they go down the road and improve in their education and success and recovery. I remember being in a room many times, individuals who was on drug and alcohol, and the door was locked, and you're in there by yourself. And it's an experience that you don't want to have. I'll just tell you this. It's an experience that most people who are counselors, drug, get to credentials, they had to go through a lot to get to, and I feel for them, because I've been in a room where some things were said by some of the clients that was, make your ears drop off. Anyway, keep up doing what you do, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Once again, thank you very much. It's one of the better things that happens than knowing that there's people like yourselves intervening when people are going through such a difficult time. So thank you, Judge Nchondo.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for your continued support.
Would you mind if we take a picture with all your team and all?
I don't mind.
Two weeks, two weeks?
Item number five D. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Green Ghost film and its initiative to promote our Hispanic culture of unity and family in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. Also, what a privilege. This is one of those multi-dimensional, from what the arts can do, to people like Charlie Clark coming from another city and partaking in our city and being so successful. I actually got to meet him just as a regular client, and I was just astonished at his love for El Paso and his quality of service and customer service. See, and all of this was before he was a rock star. And now that he's a rock star, he still talks to me. That's sort of amazing. But this is really very encouraging, and we'll talk a little bit about what it means to El Paso. We're struggling with some of the stereotypes and the things that happened in a community, things, a lot of things that don't even happen and were labeled on them. And so anybody that takes the time and the effort to get El Paso and put us on the map the way he's done, with so much love and caring for our community and for our culture. So let me read this into the record. Whereas the film Green Ghost and the Masters of the Stone was originally created to uplift the Hispanic community in an area recognized mainly on the borders of minority population. The intention is to promote equality by encouraging Hispanics in El Paso to not be intimidated by any challenges imposed by a language barrier, ethnicity, or cultural background, and pursue any dreams set forth. And whereas in dedication and reflection to the executive producer's childhood, Nana, and the love she demonstrated throughout his life, the movie teaches the public the importance of family, the love that can exist within a family regardless of genetic connection. The movie teaches how sometimes you just have to create your own family in a world plagued by division on many levels. And whereas the film Green Ghost and the Masters of the Stone brings encouragement to local filmmakers in El Paso to pursue their dreams and goals within the film industry, and represent the sun city at a high level and continue to produce globally recognized talent. And whereas the combination of rich history, geographical diverse locations, and quality talent helps promote the county as an ideal location for future films and attracts regional, national, and global attention for future films as well as contribution to the county of El Paso with potential growth in the film, promote tourism, create new revenue streams. Whereas now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioner's Court recognizes the Green Ghost and the Masters of the Stone film to help promote the love and unity that our community shares with one another and have a positive impact on our local economy. Signed this ninth day of May 2022.
I'll say, "Orale," that means I second that.
Very good, Commissioner.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge San Manigo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, come up.
Commissioners, Judge, thank you. That was, made me a bit emotional when I heard that out loud. I read, I read it, of course, and was quite honored when you proposed, proposed this. And Green Ghost and the Masters of the Stone, yes, was originally a love letter to my Mexican Nana, who was from Montmorelos, Nuevo León, Mexico. And yes, I did start in the valley, but all my businesses happen to be on the border of Mexico, which I'm very proud to say. And yes, I do celebrate the Hispanic culture, the Mexican-American and Mexican culture, and all my businesses, every day you go in, you'll see it and hear it and eat it. We'll talk about it. But yes, I am very honored that we, that you recognize the fact that that's exactly what I'm celebrating. We came here five years ago, and I feel like I've been here my whole life. You all have made me feel like true family, and I'm going to do everything in my power to serve the community and give back to the community in every which way I can, starting with the Hunger Day that you recognize today. I'm going to be a major sponsor for that. And any way we can give back, because there's plenty of young women and children on both sides of the border that need help, and we're all one. We're all one family. So I'm proud of the fact that I got, I have my Mexican side too, and as well as my American side. And to have Green Ghost and the Masters of the Stone have its premiere here with Danny Trejo sitting next to me in the theater with a judge, and having, you know, Kuno Becker in the movie, and Rene Victor, and I'm sitting here like, this is a dream come true. And the fact that we got to do it here, I'm very, very proud, and I'm very honored for this resolution, and we will continue to give back. I want you to know that about five years ago, when we invested, we're talking over twenty million dollars now between Infinity and Nissan, more than I have invested in the whole rest of my organization, was a huge risk, and I was a little bit scared, and we were losing at the beginning. And then the community got behind us and supported us, and thank God, we have now, our El Paso store is our number one store, and it's hit number one in the nation in Nissan sales already one time. And last month, we were number seven in the nation out of El Paso. That's the whole United States. So very, very proud. Thank the community, thanks to all of you for all your support. I'm honored, truly honored, and thank you to my team.
Introduce you to-
Yeah, come on up, guys.
Bobby.
I was, okay, sorry. I was, actually, I did security for twenty years. I was doing everything from nightclub to security. I was at the Indigo Hotel when Charlie met me and-
How's that possible? You're such a small guy, man.
I know, I know, that's what I said, too.
You kept me out of the nightclub.
He tried to come in, it was funny. But I mean, when I met him, it was funny when I met him. We hugged, I didn't know who this was. He was just so, I've seen him commercials, don't get me wrong, but he's such a welcoming person, and you don't even know, like, he's the man next door. I love him, he's my brother. And so when we met, we knew it was a connection, honestly. And I've been with him, it'll be three years in September, and just, I want to, I love him to death.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Martin Rocha. I help with the marketing with Charlie's stores, and truly, truly an honor to be here. You know, Charlie and I, a few years ago, we were just sitting there in the showroom, and we were like, you know, it's really amazing how we've come together. I really resonate so much with Charlie's story, and so being able to work for him and being able to deliver his passion out to the community, his will to serve, his will to support the Hispanic community, the high level of customer service is truly an honor. You know, I pour it out my heart every single day to this organization, but just being able to be a part of him and everything he's trying to do for communities just all throughout the border and throughout the US is amazing. And he's a great guy, he's got an amazing story. I've heard many, many of his stories, and I think we can all really, really relate to that. And so we really are honored to be here today. You know, we, like Charlie says, we're nothing without our community. We really aren't. So it means from the bottom of my heart to work for Charlie, I love this guy to death too, learn from so much from him as well, and just feel completely blessed to be here this morning.
Thank you, thank you for that. Go ahead, one more gentleman here.
Frank, I'm his driver.
You're very important.
That definitely drives his business, I'm telling you. No, but you know, thank you, you know, if you want to find out, you can say everything that you want about an individual and the community, because he has to sell cars, and but when employees show their love and respect and the support that they give them and how they feel, I mean, he takes an introvert like this gentleman here. I'm just kidding. He is no introvert. But you know, you're just, the way the employees react and deal with the customers and their excitement. But one of the things I want to really ask the community about the movie, please, you know, we got to show the rest, I mean, we cannot tell other people to love El Paso if we don't love El Paso, and going to the movie, showing our support, we want that movie to go throughout the United States so people can say, you know, "Where's El Paso?" Because what have we always said? To know us is to love us. And we have to get people to know us, and people always say the same thing. They come here, they love our people, they love being here, and they're excited about all these things, but I think this movie could really do something. We had another premiere of Song for Caesar that is now getting very, a lot of publicity that also started here in El Paso, so this enhances this idea of the film industry, that it's a billion industry in Santa Fe and Albuquerque, a billion-dollar industry, and people like Charlie and his film and his support, you know, he introduces Danny, now Danny, Trejo's going to bring Trejo tacos into El Paso, right? And so, see, that's how it happens. It's synergism, you know, that makes things happen in our community. And so, once again, Charlie, thank you for caring so much for our community, for our culture, telling the story, and you know, I feel like I got to know Nana now better through the movie and what she did for you and the spirit of family in Mexico like that. You promised a little dance, I don't know, we wouldn't have any music.
I'm ready. I'm always ready. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
He's such an introvert, my goodness. So no, thank you all, and if we could take a picture with you, it's an honor to have you. Thank you very much.
By the way, Judge, I thought I'd let you know that we're about to do the Spanish doblaje, the Spanish version of Green Ghost, and we're going to release it in Mexico and South America, Dominican Republic, et cetera, throughout Latin America. So it's going to be pretty cool. So, uh, it's gonna be pretty cool.
I get chills.
I'm gonna do my own voice.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Charlie, Charlie, what do we call, what do we call workout? We call it?
Car D O.
Okay, we got, see, we got a whole bunch of...
Uh, item number six is public comment. We do have one member of the public that would like to speak, his name is Mr. Pierre Andreu Sarrega. Just like to remind members, uh, in the audience that there will be a five-minute time limit for public comment.
Thank you.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, my name is Pierre Andreu Sarrega and I am the founder, chairman, and I'm gonna say I'm the 2024 presidential hopeful of the American political party. Uh, the reason, ladies and gentlemen, forgive me, I don't have anything prepared, I don't, I don't have anything written like I did the past few weeks, uh, I spoke more on a personal level. Uh, many of you know I started at this podium as a cannabis activist, trying to legalize, uh, legislation. But over the years, I started in 2013 and over the years I've realized that the left and the right have their own ideas, their own feelings as to how to legalize cannabis. And my experience has told me, taught me that we need more of a centralized idea. And that's to say that the American political party, the mission of the political, the American political party is to centralize, bring in both the left and the right so that we can not only address cannabis legislation, but we can address other issues, healthcare, homeland security, immigration, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I, I'm aware I only have five minutes, so there's only so much I can say. But I wanna use my few minutes, try and sell the idea of dismembering the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, and coming together as one, one party. Continuity from East Coast to the West Coast and back. Let's talk cannabis. Why is it that our neighboring state has legalization, but in this state we do not? Because it goes back to that multi-political party form of government, as I call it. But he's fighting for what we should do for this, for that, et cetera, et cetera. I wanna see if I can convince, beginning with the county, Judge, see if we can really begin to streamline ourselves. I would love to see this Democratic Commissioners Court work with a Republican Commissioners Court. When we're at events, we shouldn't have a Democrats, the Democrats over here doing this and the Republicans over here doing that. We should all be together. I sat in the back today and I heard beautiful stories. But that's not political and it's not government. This, after I leave, when you all get back to business and you start hitting the agenda, that's government, that's politics. What you're doing here, Austin is doing over there, but you got blue here and you got red over there. Red, white and blue. Let's talk military real, real quick as I wind down. I am associated with some veteran groups and I'm honored to say that, because they have taught me a lot, um, they have educated me on my government and my politics. Hey Pierre, you gotta be smarter, you gotta get your emotions out, be intellectual about it. Back to military, why, I've spoken with a lot of military personnel and veterans and it bothers me and it's, it dumbfounds them when you have a Republican veteran and a Democratic veteran and they still kinda bicker at each other.
Thirty seconds?
Yes, sir. We're all American. So I would love to see as an American, no longer Democratic Party, no longer Republican Party, an American political party, where we're all one. I don't care what color we are, what religion we are, what gender, male, female, we're one. So, this is my first American political party spiel, if you will, and I'm gonna continue to come in the weeks and I, I, I promise I'll have something prepared so I can address you all intellectually. But I'm asking that perhaps some of your reps can meet me in the lobby and we can begin to talk about the Americanization, the centralization of the left and the right. That's all I have to say today. Thank you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. We'll talk later. Thank you.
Good day.
God bless. God bless you too.
Caesar.
Judge, would you like to take item four E, pull from consent?
Please, uh-huh. Commissioner Stout?
Item number four E, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Fourth Amendment to the Congregate and Home Delivered Meals Agreement between the County of El Paso and Silrico Services Incorporated, adding a seventh meal for all clients in our home delivered meal program effective May 9th, 2022. Contract number 2022-0331.
I, I pulled the, the item because I wanted to just let the public know about, uh, this. I mean, it was on consent, but I think it's a, it's a, a win for, for the county and, and for the folks that participate in the senior meals program. And so I don't know, Betsy, can you, can you just talk a little bit about, um, what's gonna happen and, and when is this gonna start and, and...
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Rosalva to help us with the exact start dates.
Sure.
But I do wanna mention, um, the court, something I shared with the court when we were, um, preparing for today, you know, you look at the pandemic and you look at how many of the underlying issues and the comorbidities are related to nutrition and the majority of health issues in our community can be addressed through nutrition. And the fact that, um, our team and the, and the state were able to get this funding and draw it down and that court supports, has supported this program and has continued to drive us, um, on taking care of our most vulnerable population. And it is, it is, it may sound like something simple, one additional meal, but it is significant because for some, that is the only prepared nutritious, fully nutritious meal they may get. And so, um, thank you for pulling it and giving us this opportunity, Commissioner Stout, and I'll turn it over to Rosalva.
Welcome, Rosalva. Thank you.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Rosalva Hernandez, Program Manager for the Community Services Department. And yes, I agree also, Commissioner Stout, this is a win for our, our seniors who, who much, um, do need this, this service being delivered to their home. One additional meal will be perhaps the only meal some, some of our seniors do receive. Right now, we're serving about 1,500, um, seniors in their homes and this extra meal will definitely be, um, a much needed service. Um, the state works closely with our, our program and when they reached out to us and asked us if our vendor would be willing to join them in this effort with the seven meal plan, our vendor immediately said yes and this will be effective today, the day of signature of this amendment. So we start as readily as, if not latter part of this week, early part of next week.
That's great news.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, that's, I'm glad you did pull that out. And Rosalva, thank you and your team, it's just been amazing what, what you do and, and your compassion for, for these individuals has just been remarkable and, and, and it reen as well, obviously, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you all and, and also to the folks at HHIC for, for, um, working on this with us and, and, uh, I'm glad to hear it's gonna be commencing so soon, so, uh, even, even better. So I'll go ahead and move to approve the item.
Commissioner Oggy.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Salmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Item number seven from county administration, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We do have Dr. Ocaranza with us today.
Oh, excellent.
Dr. Ocaranza, are you online? He's juggling multiple meetings this morning, so hopefully he can jump on now.
You're on mute right now, doctor. You wanna go to see if we have any updates or...
Yes, yes, sir. Let me go through the court and then we'll come back to Dr. Ocaranza. Uh, Judge, we'll start with you, do you have any updates for the court?
Yeah, just, just keeping our eye out on, uh, what we could do for Title 42 being lifted, continue to meet with the, um, with everyone that we can to see what, you know, to get ready for it. There is some indication it might not happen, but there'll be a hearing, uh, and obviously it's very related to the protocols for, for COVID and, uh, they still exist to some extent, um, on the detention side. And so obviously that, that puts a lot of pressure on being able to accommodate. Uh, also, and I hope that, um, Dr. Ocaranza can, can address the, you know, we're hearing a lot of noise there about, uh, some of the viruses throughout the country and what that means and so we're very glad to, to have Dr. Ocaranza back with us. So if, if we, let's go ahead and finish the updates and then we'll go to Dr. Ocaranza.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Leon?
No new information.
Commissioner Stout?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Robinson? Thank you. Commissioner Oggy?
Thank you, Betsy. Um, I don't have an update, but I did just wanna take a moment to thank our, um, self-help center staff at the Aguadulce, um, self-help center as well as the Horizon Fire Department. They held a COVID-19 vaccination event this past weekend there in Aguadulce from 9:00 to 3:00, um, this past Saturday. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank them for all that they continue to do to make sure that as many, um, residents of El Paso County do have access to the vaccine.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Dr. Ocaranza, now we're back over to you.
Welcome, doctor.
Thank you very much and I apologize, uh, Dr. Ocaranza, for the record, and I'm gonna be giving a very short presentation and definitely, Judge, uh, some of the perspective around the country and what is happening with the COVID-19 and I'm gonna be sharing my screen to show you that presentation. Hopefully, everybody can see my... Can everybody see my presentation?
Yes, sir.
Ah, very good. Well, the situation in El Paso, we're still enjoying very favorable metrics. We have low numbers of positive cases, but mainly the hospitalized people, uh, has continued to see, uh, very low numbers. Some days are gonna be declining, some other days we see a slight increase, but also we continue to see very low numbers of people infected with COVID-19 in the ICU. That speaks about the severity of the disease and our community has gone down tremendously. And the reason for this could be the high level of vaccination, but also that a lot of the people are protecting themselves, uh, added to the Omicron variant that is still prevalent in our community and that has proven to be less severe than the Delta variant. We're starting to hear those uptick of new cases and hospitalizations in many parts of the country, particularly in the East Coast and the West Coast. Vaccination continues to be very effective at preventing severe disease, meaning it's gonna help avoid that hospitalization, it's gonna help avoid, uh, mechanical ventilation and death from COVID-19. It's been proven scientifically over and over in how the vaccination, even though we have new variants, the vaccination continues to be effective. Effectiveness drops as new variants come out because of the mutations that they have, but it still has proven to be effective. Companies, the vaccination companies are working on getting some approvals. One of them is called the Vivalent, uh, vaccine, which Moderna has started to work on that, that has, uh, two elements of the COVID-19 virus that is gonna hopefully bring that effectiveness of the vaccine even higher what it is right now. So we're still looking to see what is happening in that, uh, sense. But the good thing is that because of our community has a very high vaccination levels, we need to continue inviting everybody and I'm glad the Commissioner Oggy had that event, uh, vaccination event, because that gives that opportunity for people that haven't received the booster to come and get the booster. The booster vaccine is gonna also help us prepare and be protected for the summer where a lot of people are gonna be traveling, there's gonna be a lot of gathering. And one of those gatherings are gonna be the celebrations for graduation that are coming and they're in the works right now and they're gonna be, we're gonna be having to, uh, celebrate the accomplishments of all those seniors coming out of high school. This is gonna be a very special year because there's not gonna be as many restrictions in our community, but still, we need to be careful, we need to be, uh, addressing the risks that each family has. So if you have somebody that is considered high-risk, please make an assessment whether you need, you need to attend to those highly crowded events with somebody that is considered very high-risk. People are still welcome to use non- pharmacological things such as the mask, the distancing, uh, and that also will continue to provide an extra layer of protection besides, uh, the vaccination. And just continue to be very vigilant. We expect that COVID-19 being a respiratory virus is gonna have a peak in the late fall and the winter, but nonetheless, we're gonna be, continue to see a day-to-day variation in the number of positive cases and also the hospitalizations. We're gonna continue to evolve in the way that we monitor the pandemic and I wanted to present this as a draft, uh, image of what we're gonna be monitoring because the dashboard is gonna be evolving. Where we have here at the top middle part of the, this dashboard, it's gonna be the community levels established by the CDC, which is gonna be low, medium or high in vaccination rate, also all the metrics that we measure for community levels. We're also getting into the works with a wastewater surveillance system, which El Paso is working with the CDC and they're still, uh, fine-tuning that monitoring system because that's another one of the, uh, early warning system when we're gonna be seeing, uh, any problems or spikes within our community in regards to COVID-19. So there's still several things in the work. We're gonna be seeing those, uh, the dashboard evolving, monitoring a different way, but continue to keep a very close eye now on the hospitalizations and how high the number of positive cases are. So expect to see some of the positive cases go up and down, up and down, but hopefully this whole summer is gonna be favorable for our community. But nonetheless, the COVID is still around, we still need to tell the people to protect themselves and to be aware of your surroundings, be aware of your risk and how much risk are you willing to take. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, no, thank you, doctor, we, we appreciate that and thank you for encouraging the, uh, the, the booster and, uh, Commissioner Stout and myself are working on, uh, celebrating a, the, uh, Vaccine Day and, and the reason for that is we don't wanna be trying to convince people about the vaccination when it spikes. It, it, it's really difficult and it takes time to get there. Uh, so we want them to recognize... So we want them to recognize that as soon as, you know, we want them to have the booster now. Some people have strategies, for example, that I've been told that I want to wait until I see, you know, an uptick because then it, I'll lose the protection. So whatever you need to do, but as soon as we see any kind of a movement and increase or an uptick on, on the virus, just be very vigilant that, that the vaccination is really what would help us. I mean, that's what really got the only coronavirus sort of come in and go out quickly because of our protection. So we were very recognized as the first and we continue to want everyone to be, you know, vaccinated before we have any problems or issue. It's, it's difficult once you get into the, the crisis. So, Dr. Ocaranza, thank you for always educating us and, and keeping an eye on, on what's happening. And we always welcome you to, to come back and let us know what we need to be doing as things either, hopefully they don't progress, but if they do, that we do it in a very timely basis.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you for all the support and thank you for the court for always being there and definitely thank you for everything that you do for the community. We'll continue to move forward and if there's more updates, I'll be bringing them to the court in a timely manner and definitely I'm, I'm happy to be here with you.
Dr. Ocaranza, thank you. You have a wonderful day. Thanks.
Thank you. You all too.
If there's nothing further, we'll take no action on item number seven. Item number eight, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioner's Court for final acceptance and approval. Item number eight, approve and authorize the Criminal Justice Coordination Department to apply for the fiscal year 22, applying principles behind Project Hope grant application in the amount of $800,000 from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2026. No county match required. Contract number 2022-0355. Catherine.
Welcome. Thank you very much, County Judge. Honorable Commissioners, Catherine Jones, Criminal Justice Director with the Criminal Justice Coordination Department. I am here seeking your approval to apply for this grant. It is very competitive. It is based on a program that was started in Hawaii under, it's called Project Hope, and it is based on swift, certain, and fair principles behind supervision of, of clients. And it is competitive. I'm going to give it my best shot. If I don't get it this year, you'll see me back next year applying again. So if you have any questions.
Well, thank you for, for that and for your efforts. So move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ogier.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Salmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This brings us to item number nine, executive session. At this time, Commissioner's Court will recess into executive session to discuss items nine A through nine C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that, that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive, but chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is, is a necessity that they must have, food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is 500, the second is 2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals and we will pull animals and restrict
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do it is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to, to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well, and to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to, to see the, behind the property to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. What's up, baby? So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Outlook everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like, like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a class senior minor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Hey, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's going to be taken to the shelter since he was strained loose at large for not, not being restrained.
In outlook, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
Here's timer. Set. Go.
Running in the valley and past the missions, what else could you ask for?
Welcome runners, welcome.
At the county, we work so hard to really promote the mission trail. We know what an absolute treasure it is, how historic it is, and so many people don't really know what's here in the Mission Valley. So this is a great way to spotlight our historic treasures, our historic buildings.
Yeah, it was a really cool course. It was beautiful. I liked the mountains in the background and yeah, cool things to look at.
I noticed a few of those signs and I also actually really appreciated that. That's, it also goes into the scenery of it, I think, is to see all that history and that's kind of what people really appreciate in marathons. I mean, I'm from DC. The races, we run up there, they make an effort to go through the monuments and all that. So it's good to see El Paso trying to do the same thing with their history.
We had people from Germany, England, of course, Mexico, and I believe somebody from France, and then from 38 different states come and visit us this year.
There are folks here from all over the country. This is a qualifier for the Boston Marathon. It's, it's a huge event, huge event, and I'm just incredibly proud that we're going to get to show off the Mission Valley to all of these folks.
I, I hope, I hope we do it again. I'm sure that we will, you know, based on what we get from, feedback we get from the runners, that I'm sure we'll be back down there.
This has been a great experience. El Paso, you rock.
Woo-hoo. You did it.
We're talking about a problem that existed in the area for over 20 years that had not been addressed. August of last year, we had a tremendous flooding and it was necessitated having the proper equipment to, to mitigate the flooding because we had homes and business that were
The court authorized to purchase these four new pieces of equipment for us to combat during stormwater events. We're very excited to have this opportunity. As you can see, these are, are great vehicles that we have. These trucks are great equipment that we could use. It'll help us reduce some of the, the flooding and some of the ponding that we have that occurs in the county.
We purchased four of the evac trucks, which are capable, one truck is capable of sucking up, I believe, 800 gallons of water per minute. There would have been a tremendous asset had we had those then because Donovan area was, was flooded tremendously.
One of the great things of this truck is that basically we're able to do a lot of the, the work from inside the actual cab. Before, we used to have to take the hose off and you stand in the middle of the water and suck up the water. With this new equipment, we're able to direct it either via remote or from the cab. We just lower the boom into the, the ponding area and we're able to extract the water that way. You know, these pieces of equipment are, are a great first set that we have and looking forward for new opportunities in the future.
Stay tuned. We have good things coming to El Paso County, particularly the Northwest region.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Today, we're having our second annual event here at the beautiful park. Everybody showed up real early. It's a beautiful day. We have plenty of things that you can purchase for a donation. Everything goes back to the Animal County Welfare Department, and with that money's in an effort to reduce the pet population here in El Paso, we roll it back into our clinic. And then we also have free microchipping with our partners from El Paso Animal Services. And also our partners are out here from I Mom's Home Rescue Group and for some adoptions. We've got some cute pets out here that need forever homes. Say hi, Max. Say hi, Max. When we offer these resources, they come early, they line up, and they want to do what's best for their pets.
And then we will go ahead and register her with the city of El Paso as well as with the county here.
It's cost efficient, you know, to do it for free. That helped a lot and that was, that was huge, huge motivator to come out and, and get this done. So it's great.
So this event came to be as a celebration of Reed across America, so promoting literacy. Woo, look at the fish. It was a partnership with the United Way of El Paso, donating the books for kids, free books for kids to read. And then, of course, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Animal Services, the County of El Paso Animal Services as well, partnering all to teaching kids how to fish with the fish derby.
Be patient. Wait for the fish to come.
And educating the public on how to care for their furry friends. So it's a beautiful day to be out at Ascot at the park.
Reading children like this was really nice. Like I said, like I never, I've never really read books outside. We live in an apartment building, so we don't have the luxury to go out into a yard and, and read like on a blanket and stuff. So it was nice to have that here and have that opportunity. And our son, he really seemed to like it. Like I said, like the attention span can be short, but I think in this environment, he really liked hearing the book out in the sunshine. he really liked hearing the book out in the sunshine.
Come play with us at Ascara de Park or your local county park.
We're really excited to host a girls' basketball camp with the UTEP softball club. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging eight to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball.
I think it's important for youth to say just to make sure they have the right mechanics down and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly, so that way when they get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains. So they separated the catchers and they, they're still running bases and I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports. Events like this one, the camp at the sports park are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location, the way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that there are almost a mini professional baseball fields out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county.
Come and play with us at El Paso County Park!
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive, but chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity that they must have, food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is 500, the second is 2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do it is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well. And to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Out took everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it isn't an issue your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Okay, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's going to be taken to the shelter because he was being loose at large for not being restrained.
In out took, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
Runners, two more. Set. Go!
Running in the valley and past the missions, what else could you ask for?
Welcome runners, welcome!
At the county, we work so hard to really promote the Mission Trail. We know what an absolute treasure it is, how historic it is. And so many people don't really know what's here in the Mission Valley. So this is a great way to spotlight our historic treasures, our historic buildings.
Yeah, it was a really cool course. It was beautiful. I liked the mountains in the background and yeah, cool things to look at.
I noticed a few of those signs and I also actually really appreciated that. That also goes into the scenery of it, I think, is to see all that history. And that's kind of what people really appreciate in marathons. I mean, I'm from DC. The races we run up there, they make an effort to go through the monuments and all that. So it's good to see El Paso trying to do the same thing with their history.
We had people from Germany, England, of course, Mexico, and I believe somebody from France. And then from 38 different states come and visit us this year.
There are folks here from all over the country. This is a qualifier for the Boston Marathon. It's a huge event, huge event. And I'm just incredibly proud that we're going to get to show off the Mission Valley to all of these folks.
I hope, I hope we do it again. I'm sure that we will. You know, based on what we get from, feedback we get from the runners, that I'm sure we'll be back down there.
This has been a great experience. El Paso, you rock.
You did it!
We're talking about a problem that existed in the area for over 20 years that had not been addressed. August of last year, we had a tremendous flooding and it was necessitated having the proper equipment to mitigate the flooding because we had homes and business that were flooded out.
The Corps authorized to purchase these four new pieces of equipment for us to combat during stormwater events. We're very excited to have this opportunity. As you can see, these are great vehicles that we have. These trucks are great equipment that we could use. It'll help us reduce some of the flooding and some of the ponding that we have that occurs in the county.
We purchased four of the evac trucks which are capable, one truck is capable of tucking up, I believe, 800 gallons of water per minute. There would've been tremendous asset had we had those then because Dunlop area was flooded tremendously.
One of the great things of this truck is that basically we're able to do a lot of the work from inside the actual cab before we used to have to take the hose off and you stand in the middle of the water and suck up the water. With this new equipment, we're able to direct it either via remote or from the cab. We just lower the boom into the ponding area and we're able to extract the water that way. You know, these pieces of equipment are a great first set that we have and looking forward for new opportunities in the future.
Stay tuned, we have good things coming to El Paso County, particularly the northwest region.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. 915. We are known for history. Culture. Food. And art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Today, we're having our second annual event here at the beautiful park. Everybody showed up real early. It's a beautiful day. We have plenty of things that you can purchase for a donation. Everything goes back to the Animal County Welfare Department. And with that money, in an effort to reduce the pet population here in El Paso, we roll it back into our clinic. And then we also have free microchipping with our partners from El Paso Animal Services. And also, our partners are out here from I Momma's Home Rescue Group and for some adoptions. We've got some cute pets out here that need forever homes. Say hi, Max. Say hi, Max. When we offer these resources, they come early, they line up, and they want to do what's best for their pets.
And then we will go ahead and register her with the city of El Paso as well as with the county here.
It's cost efficient, you know, to do it for free. That helped a lot and that was huge. Huge motivator to come out and get this done. So it's great.
So this event came to be as a celebration of read across America, so promoting literacy. It was a partnership with the United Way of El Paso, donating the books for kids, free books for kids to read. And then, of course, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Animal Services, the County of El Paso Animal Services as well, partnering all to teaching kids how to fish with the Fish Derby.
Be patient. Wait for the fish to come.
And educating the public on how to care for their furry friends. So it's a beautiful day to be out at Ascara de Park.
Reading to them like this was really nice. Like I said, like I never, I've never really read books outside. We live in an apartment building, so we don't have the luxury to go out into a yard and read like on a blanket and stuff. So it was nice to have that here and have that opportunity. Our son, he really seemed to like it. Like I said, like the attention span can be short, but I think in this environment, he really liked hearing the book out in the sunshine.
Come play with us at Ascara de Park or your local county park.
We're really excited to host a girls' fast pitch camp with the UTEP softball club. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging eight to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball.
I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics down and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly, so that way when they get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains. So they separated the catchers and they're still running bases and I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports, events like this one, the camp at the sports park are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location, the way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that there are almost mini-professional baseball fields out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive. But chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity that they must have. Food and water and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in. Gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is 500, the second is 2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do this is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well. And to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Out took everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Hey, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's gonna be taken to a shelter because he was stray loose at large for not being restrained.
In Out took, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
Runners, two more. Set.
Running in the valley and past the missions, what else could you ask for?
At the county, we work so hard to really promote the Mission Trail. We know what an absolute treasure it is, how historic it is. And so many people don't really know what's here in the Mission Valley. So this is a great way to spotlight our historic treasures, our historic buildings.
Yeah, it was a really cool course. It was beautiful. I liked the mountains in the background and yeah, cool things to look at.
I noticed a few of those signs and I also actually really appreciated that. That also goes into the scenery of it, I think, is to see all that history. And that's kind of what people really appreciate in marathons. I mean, I'm from DC. The races we run up there, they make an effort to go through the monuments and all that. So it's good to see El Paso trying to do the same thing with their history.
We had people from Germany, England, of course, Mexico, and I believe somebody from France, and then from 38 different states come and visit us this year.
There are folks here from all over the country. This is a qualifier for the Boston Marathon. It's a huge event, huge event. And I'm just incredibly proud that we're gonna get to show off the Mission Valley to all of these folks.
I hope we do it again. I'm sure that we will. Based on what we get, feedback we get from the runners, that I'm sure we'll be back down there.
This has been a great experience. El Paso, you rock.
We're talking about a problem that existed in the area for over 20 years that had not been addressed. August of last year, we had a tremendous flooding and it was necessitated having the proper equipment to mitigate the flooding because we had homes and businesses that were flooded out.
The court authorized to purchase these four new pieces of equipment for us to combat during stormwater events. We're very excited to have this opportunity. As you can see, these are great vehicles that we have. These trucks are great equipment that we could use. It'll help us reduce some of the flooding and some of the ponding that we have that occurs in the county.
We purchased four of the evac trucks, which are capable, one truck is capable of tucking up, I believe, 800 gallons of water per minute. That would've been a tremendous asset had we had those then because the dolphin area was flooded tremendously.
One of the great things of this truck is that basically we're able to do a lot of the work from inside the actual cab. Before, we used to have to take the hose off and you send in the middle of the water and suck up the water. With this new equipment, we're able to direct it either via remote or from the cab. We just lower the boom into the ponding area and we're able to extract the water that way. You know, these pieces of equipment are a great first step that we have and looking forward for new opportunities in the future.
Stay tuned. We have good things coming to El Paso County, particularly the northwest region.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. We are known for history. Culture. Food. And art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Today, we're having our second annual event here at the beautiful park. Everybody showed up real early. It's a beautiful day. We have plenty of things that you can purchase for a donation. Everything goes back to the Animal County Welfare Department. And with that money, in an effort to reduce the pet population here in El Paso, we roll it back into our clinic. And then we also have free microchipping with our partners from El Paso Animal Services. And also, our partners are out here from I Mom's Home Rescue Group, and for some adoptions. We've got some cute pets out here that need forever homes. Say hi, Max. Say hi, Max. When we offer these resources, they come early, they line up, and they want to do what's best for their pets.
And then we will go ahead and register her with the city of El Paso, as well as with the county here.
It's cost efficient, you know, to do it for free. That helped a lot, and that was huge, huge motivator to come out and get this done. So it's great.
So this event came to be as a celebration of read across America, so promoting literacy. It was a partnership with the United Way of El Paso, donating the books for kids, free books for kids to read. And then, of course, the Parks and Recreation Department, and the animal services, the County of El Paso Animal Services, as well partnering all to teaching kids how to fish with the Fish Derby.
Be patient. Wait for the fish to come.
And educating the public on how to care for their furry friends. So it's a beautiful day to be out at a Scotty Park.
Reading to them like this was really nice. Like I said, like I never, I've never really read books outside. We live in an apartment building, so we don't have the luxury to go out into a yard and read, like on a blanket and stuff. So it was nice to have that here and have that opportunity. And our son, he really seemed to like it. Like I said, like the attention span can be short, but I think in this environment, he really liked hearing the book out in the sunshine.
Come play with us at a Scotty Park or your local county park.
We're really excited to host a girls' fast pitch camp with the UTEP softball club. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging eight to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball.
I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics down, and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly. So that way, when they get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains. So they separated the catchers, and they're still running bases, and I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports. Events like this one, the camp at the sports park, are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location. The way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that there are almost mini professional baseball fields out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county.
Come and play with us at El Paso County Park!